Thank you. It's now July 28th, 6 o'clock at James Monroe. Roll call, please, Ms. Cluck.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mrs. Matiker?
Here.
Mr. Shi? Mrs. Peng? Mrs. White?
Here.
Mr. Mohim Patel? Mr. Burrell Patel?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Dr. Haydock?
Here.
Six present.
Thank you very much. Opening statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 4th and June 9th, 2022. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. At this time, we're going to move to a privileged session after the motion, but just a little housekeeping. We'll be back there, I don't know, maybe an hour, hour and a half, maybe, I would estimate. If for some reason we have any delays, we'll be happy to come out here and apprise you of our updates. And with that said, Ms. Cluck?
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. Attorney-client privilege discussion regarding student matters, litigation brought by former employees and students, ETA grievances, perk, unfair labor practices, Lincoln addition, school business administrator candidates, personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Do I have a motion to pass that resolution?
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. For those who weren't here before, welcome here to James Monroe. Could I have a motion to reconvene to open session, please?
Motion to reconvene?
Motion. Mr. Shi, second.
Motion.
Mr. Patel, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a roll call, Ms. Cluck?
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mrs. Matiker?
Here.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mrs. Peng?
Here.
Mrs. White?
Here.
Mr. Mohim Patel?
Present.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda, we have an administrative review of resolutions. Dr. Bragan?
Thank you, Board President. If you look at the administrative resolutions, the first one up is a statement of assurances for high school voter registration for 2223. The next up will be resolution for the appointment of our bond counsel. Next up is appointment of our financial advisory services. The next up is an appointment for business office consulting services. Next up is the appointment of the energy savings improvement program engineering services. We have a settlement resolution that we discussed in closed session. Under curriculum instruction, we have our traditional field trips, professional development opportunities for staff in July, and our normal add-up district placements that tends to get updated monthly with the changes in enrollment with our students with special needs. And professional services for the year, those professional services as related services are being approved, not necessarily going to be utilized, and we use those on an as-needed basis. We'll turn it over, Mr. Board President, to Mrs. Cluck with the finance resolutions.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. For finance, we had the approval of the minutes from the June meeting. We have the board secretary's report, and then the finance resolutions, which include transfers, bid results, the 1920 school nutrition program procurement review, the FCC LA grant. We have bid results from transportation. We have our cooperative bids for the 2223 school year. We have the co-op for Equalis Group. We also have the co-op for the UC ESC. We have the results from the proposal for auditing services, our non-public school aid, which includes security, nursing, technology, and textbooks, dual-use classrooms. Also, the non-public also includes nursing services, our insurance premiums, our change orders, obsolete items, and the normal payment of claims, our medical and transportation report. And then some rebids that we had to go out for boiler cleaning, boiler service and maintenance, building materials, and the school bus maintenance and repair services. And that concludes the finance.
Thank you, Ms. Cluck.
Board President, I have questions.
Mr. Patel.
Okay. So, Dr. Bragan, can you please explain what is the appointment of a bond counsel? What are the roles? I see the law firm of Violence, Coleman, and Spitzer. Why are we appointing a bond counsel, and what are they exactly going to do?
The bond counsel would be our, you know, our legal representation anytime we enter in any kind of bond. As you know, we approved a few meetings ago to enter into an ESIP, and we appointed an ESCO, which is a company that oversees that. Those monies are bonded, and, you know, we get basically akin to what a mortgage would be, and we use the savings from the energy savings from the ESIP to pay for that. So that's our legal counsel that has expertise in securing those bonds and what that would look like moving forward.
Okay. So is this bond related to the infrastructure development plan, or is this related to EC plan?
EC plan, but that's what we have it dedicated for. But a bond counsel's a bond counsel. They could do any bonds that we come up with.
Okay. So the appointment is for the whole year, and then whether we do the infrastructure or ESIP, this will be the firm for legal services?
It would be a firm that we have appointed. If the board chose to have another firm do a different task, we could do that as well, but it gives them approval for us to use them over the course of this school year. That would be correct. Mr. Patel?
Okay. The next question I have is resolution authorizing appointment for a certain financial advisory services. It says, "The firm of Acacia Financial Group, Maltham, New Jersey, will be retained to provide specialized financial advisory services related to the bond referendum and the issuance of school bonds and other obligations." I need to know more about this part.
Okay. We had people put in for that, for the bond financial services. Again, if we were going to go out with a bond, you need someone to bid the bond, to put the bond together, to come up with what the actual cost would be, what the interest rates would be, contact the banks and secure those. And there are firms that do that. The firm that we're looking to appoint today is Acacia Financial, who has expertise in that area. We actually brought one of the representatives to a previous finance committee meeting last year to discuss what those services would look like. And the firm that we're appointing here is well-respected in the field and has done this in a number of different districts that I'm personally aware of.
Board President, I have a few questions.
Mr. Bureau Patel, go ahead.
So, it's again the bond. So I understand. Violence is legal services, so I get that. That's okay. But this one, so if we issue a bond, from the last committee of the whole meeting, my understanding is we are running, we are very close to the amount of money that we already have, you know, comparing last year, next year, and the surplus reserves and everything for the capital budget and everything. So if we issue a bond, so do we plan to issue a bond, and that's the reason we are retaining this firm, or what's section plan here? Why are we doing this now?
Well, you can't have an ESIP without issuing the funding. So the ESIP basically takes, we budget annually close to $3 million for utilities. And the idea of an energy savings investment plan is that a company's going to come in, do an investment-grade audit, which we're in the process of having done, and when they do that audit, they come back to recommendations. Example, hey, Ben Franklin Elementary School would really benefit from LED lighting. It would save your electrical costs in that building. I'm making up a number, $100,000 a year. You do that across, you know, 19 schools, you're going to save, you know, $1.9 million. So you would use that money to pay a bond, to then get new boilers, to get new infrastructure, maybe new HVAC units, or whatever that comes out to be. And the investment-grade audit is going to get us that information, and we come back to one of our committees, and working with the ESCO company, we decide what that would be. We have a rough estimate of a district of our size and what our annual utility cost would be, that that would be somewhere in the range of $14 million worth of equipment, whatever that transpires to be: boilers, lighting, HVAC, whatever we can pay for which schools are the most in need. Well, you basically bond that $14 million for 20 years, and you use the savings that it generates from your annual utility cost to pay for that. So in order to do that, you need a bond. So that's what we're talking about. This has nothing to do with any infrastructure plan or anything that we've discussed at the committee for the whole.
Okay, great. So that clarifies one point. It has nothing to do with the infrastructure plan. So it's related to ESIP. So now ESIP, the DCU Energy, will present us with all the measures, and then we'll look at the measures, and then we'll decide on how we want to proceed based on their report, right?
Correct.
So at that point of time, to move forward with the actual work is when we need these bonds. And it's fine, because we'll decide depending on what the report is and what the details are. At the same time, this is a self-funding program, so it's not an alarming thing for the people. So that's the good news over there.
Yes.
However, the appointment of the firm, this financial group, did DCU Energy, who is our ESIP auditor right now, recommend this, or did we do an RFP?
We did an RFP.
Okay. So what are the results of the RFP?
I don't have them off the top of my head, and you have those readily available.
I have sent them to you.
I don't have them readily available?
Okay.
If you want them, we could provide that to you if you need.
Yes, I would like to have the results of the RFP. And this appointment, how urgent is this? Does it have to be done today?
There's a timeliness to having all these, the bond counsel, the financial advisor, as well as the energy savings engineering, done in a timely manner, so it doesn't delay the ESIP process. The ESCO thought we were going to be able to approve these in June, but that we weren't able to bring that to fruition in that time.
Okay.
So is there a delay? Yeah, it would be a delay.
Okay. All right. So we don't intend to delay any processes, but I wish there was an RFP, and, I mean, results of the RFP. But at the same time, we have a scheduled budget planning and oversight committee meeting for 15th of August, where we are expecting DCO to come in and discuss the results and provide a lot more details to us. And myself, Brian Rivera, and Jerry Shi are part of that committee. So this thing right here should have been discussed in the Budget Planning and Oversight Committee. We should have been able to discuss the bids, RFP, because this is the appointment of financial advisory services. We are talking about a potential, I mean, I am assuming and understanding that that bond, that the whole ESIP is self-funding, but at the same time, we are talking about millions of dollars of here and the word bond, right? So it was very important for this thing to be evaluated in the Budget Planning and Oversight Committee. For this time, I personally, I will defer to other board members, but I personally am okay with this time. But I would really request that all the financial resolutions like this has to come in a Budget Planning and Oversight Committee, right? It has to be discussed with the Budget Planning and Oversight Committee, so we compare and we make appropriate decisions. At the same time, it's very important, because we would be very mindful of the taxpayers' dollars here. The town does not like bond referendum and stuff like that. I thank you for making it very clear, which is this far, because for a moment I thought we were issuing a referendum, but now it's much clearer. But at the same time, let's pick a point to bring everything in the Budget Planning and Oversight Committee.
Okay.
I have another question regarding the same EC program. Appointment of energy savings program engineering services of Johnson &amp; Urban of Cole Snack, New Jersey, and $11,000, and there are a bunch of rates. What are they for? It's certainly related to ESIP, but what are they going to do?
Yeah, they were, the ESCO company that we're using, DCO, had recommended that we get a program engineer for the energy savings investment plan. And basically what they are, is they are a third-party engineering firm that reviews what DCO is going to put forth as their investment-grade audit and verify what they're saying is accurate and in the best interest of the district. So we had a couple of firms we contacted about putting this information together and sending it to us, and that was the firm that provided it. And they're the ones that came back for the RFP. And their basic services, the investment-grade audit, when it's done by DCO, they're a third-party person who goes over it and makes sure it's, for lack of a better word, everything is aligned to what it should be, and it's in the best interest of the district.
Right. So is Johnson &amp; Urban going to do third-party review, or they're going to do the actual work? What are they going to do?
They are the third-party review engineer. They are not doing the actual work.
Okay. So what happened is when I looked at this agenda, I did a Google, I called my friends in the different districts, and then I found out, oh, Johnson &amp; Urban, and there is a third-party review, and I had to educate myself on the process. I had to do tremendous research the last two days to go over the process. What would have been helpful is when myself, Jerry Shi, and Brian Rivera would have met in the Budget Planning and Oversight Committee, and Doug O'Shivie would have joined, if all these things would have come at that time, along with the discussion of other ESIP thing, we all would have been very clear. I don't know if Jerry or Brian knows about this thing, and Doug, but I really think this should have been all discussed as a part of EC program and in the Budget Planning and Oversight Committee, because EC program is millions of dollars a program. Now, it's a self-funding program. I'm very excited about it, but at the same time, I'm very concerned, and we want to make sure we make 100% correct decisions for every single penny that is accounted for for the taxpayer. So let's move forward very carefully on this, on all these items. I think I'm okay with all these three items today, but it's really concerning that it did not come to the Budget Planning and Oversight Committee.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Patel, this was reviewed at the Budget Planning and Oversight Committee, and the presentation by DCO on two separate occasions went over this exact process. They didn't have the results of the RFPs, but it's not accurate to say that this wasn't discussed at that committee. It was, and the process was clearly delineated and shared what it would look like in the timeframes involved. It's in the PowerPoint that they provided. What they didn't provide was the actual firms that were going to be awarded for the RFP, because it's not for them to do that. It's for this Board of Education.
Right. No, I understand. So a lot of information was provided to us by DCO, and we met several times, and that is the reason I precisely set up many meetings. So all of us are very well aware of this process.
Okay.
So that we make right decisions, right? But now we are getting into the numbers and hiring of the actual services of the actual firm, and we really want to dig deep into it and make sure the right firm is hired. Maybe these are all rock stars. Maybe Johnson &amp; Urban is the best in the world, the cheapest one. Maybe Violence is the best one for the bond counsel, and maybe Acacia is the best financial advisor. I mean, if I were to make decision, I would probably also look into the community for a volunteer financial group. I don't know how feasible it is, but maybe there are rock stars in Edison Township who can provide those services. I don't know how it works legally, but all those things would have been discussed in the Budget Planning and Oversight Committee, and we would have really made decisions. Because EC, from day one, every single thing, we had multiple meetings, and someone may think it would be a waste of time, but we really, I personally felt very comfortable moving forward with the program and knowing each and every aspect of the program. And it's really beneficial for this, but let's make a point to discuss everything in detail going forward. And if anything comes up, please, we can also set up another urgent meeting if we need to for the committee, but it has to become, all the financial item has to come to Budget Planning and Oversight Committee.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Board President?
Mr. Shi?
Yeah, just on the same line, on the appointment of the energy saving improvement program engineering services. Bernie, is this a part of that total 21% of the cost, or this is additional cost for the ESIP program? You're not the one talking about the 21%?
I do. I believe this is part of the entire cost.
Okay. Thank you.
I had one question, Dr. Bragan. This is about the appointment of the business office consulting services. I'm seeing that we are going to be paying $150 per hour. How many hours do we envision this person to be working, and what is this person going to be doing, or this group going to be doing?
Yeah, it's a firm, but it's basically one group, Frank Cirovella, who's a retired business administrator. I don't anticipate many hours to do this, but it's an opportunity to have somebody with expertise to help us in our time of transition until we find a and secure a full-time, you know, school business administrator. We're doing a good job, and we've been in this capacity, Ms. Cluck and myself, for about a year. But there are some things that, you know, we need some assistance with, and we think someone who's been an expert in the field over time, and this person has proven to be that. If you ask me, hours, a couple hours a week at the most.
And what about Summit? There was a group called Summit that was also hired last year, right? Consulting when it was doing, you're paying $110,000, right?
Yeah. Summit, we basically used to help reconcile some of our books last year in preparation for our audit and make sure the accounts were all reconciled. We did not approve them again this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Board President?
Mr. Shi?
Yeah, I just want to add a comment. So the bond counsel, you know, it's not, we're going out for issue of bond. The other thing is, when Dr. Bragan presented the phase one of the plan, we need to go out, do a, what's the word, lease purchase. Lease purchase is the same thing. You go out, you borrow money, and the bond counsel will help us to get the best rate. You're going to go out and, you know, put our things there, put out for bids, a company will come in bid. That's part of their job as well. So besides the ESIP, that the bond counsel will also help us with the, you know, the phase one of the construction. So I have another question. I know the answer, but I just want Dr. Bragan to confirm. So I received some questions from, oh, by the way, is the personnel agenda online? Because someone texted me that the personnel agenda is not online yet. Is that IT?
I'll find out. I don't know.
Okay. So the other thing that, you know, in the finance resolution, there are some, several items. We have like middle school sports, we have classroom purchases, and, you know, the special ed purchases. And when you look at the dollar amount, that some of them are not, some of them are more, some of them are less. So my understanding is these are the things that we have already spent. It doesn't mean that these are the only money we're going to spend on these programs. We could continue to spend, you know, on the thing that's needed. So people are saying, hey, why you spend so much money on this? Why you're ignoring this? You know? So, Dr. Bragan, can you just confirm that is correct? My understanding is correct?
Your understanding is correct. What's listed on the budget are just items that have already been expended, not on the budget, I'm sorry, on the agenda for tonight. Like for educational supplies, district-wide, in this year's budget is $2.5 million. Supplies overall is $5.3 million. If you just look at last spring, I know the Board shows in the Budget Oversight and Planning Committee decided to ask the supervisors and the principals to contact teachers and come up with which list of materials and help them support the educational process. And that was over $1.5 million in supplies that were dedicated for that. Textbooks, which weren't even mentioned, you know, we allocate $2.4 million a year. There was a question regarding special needs, you know, that's a significant portion of our budget, you know, in excess of almost $50 million. So there's a lot of money expended. What you see on there is just a small portion of what's been allocated that's on this agenda. I hope I answered that.
Thank you. And just one other question?
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Sorry. Just one other question about the finance resolution that I'm done. This is about the special ed tuition contract, number 44, with the...
Can you speak in the mic? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Yes. So this is the number 44 special ed tuition contract agreement. So the person who sent me this email said, "What specific programs are they offering for classified students that we don't offer, and what is the cost?"
It's a great question. What you see on the agenda is just through an agreement that we enter into with the Union County Ed Services Commission. You know, there's an Ed Services Commission for Middlesex County, which is the Ed Service Commission in New Jersey. There's also a Monmouth-Ocean Ed Services Commission that services Monmouth and Ocean Counties. And we typically do send students there for special education programs depending on the student's need and the programs that are offered. And sometimes they're not offered locally, so we'll go to a different county. And this is just an agreement to allow us to enter into that. And should one of our students go to one of the specific programs or schools they have, we would get a separate contract delineating the exact amount.
Thank you. I'm done with the resolutions.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to move to public comment on resolutions only. Mr. Manesh? Reminder, you have six total minutes.
Doug, you got to read your thing.
Are you giving me 12 minutes?
What's that?
Read your thing.
Read my thing. Okay.
Read my thing.
Are you ready, Mr. Manesh?
Sure.
All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the Board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern of the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law governing defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of their legal ramifications of their comments, the Board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor.
Are you giving me one?
Thank you very much.
Doug, are you giving me one?
No. You're on your own.
Manesh Patel, 240, Waldman Ave. I think I'm going to need more than six minutes today. From all the dickering that's going on for the last 20 minutes, I believe, that you guys came back. God knows what you do in the two hours that you've been there. So let's start. First of all, thank you very much to all of you for approving for my 240 kids, $450,000 or whatever that number is. So thank you all. Second, my question, I just learned, we're hiring business administrators supplement, somebody who's going to work for him. Aren't we talking about this for the last six months? And it takes six months to hire a business administrator? Come on. We're running a $300 million budget company called Edison Board of Education, and it takes six months for a superintendent to find one BA?
Over six months, almost a year.
That means you're disqualified, because you can't hire him. You're not doing enough advertisement. Come on, my friend, you're a doctor. Also, let me remind you that you are using taxpayers' money. When you hire outside services to do other things, and you also, I'm sure, paying somebody else to do BA's work. Either you doing it, VP's doing it, some other president's doing it, somebody's doing it. Find somebody who could do his job, because that's an important role to run a company. We are running a company, aren't we? It's a $300 million budget, and it's a taxpayer's money. Well, a lot of single mothers, single parents work hard and give you money because they live in Edison for their kids, and we need to make sure that it's taken care of. Let me also talk about teachers' appointments. We know we didn't hire too many teachers yet. There's appointments going on, but there's still a lot of appointments not done. Union County and other counties, but I have seen on Route 22, I've seen it on, when I was going to Philadelphia, a billboard, "Teachers are welcome, starting salary $65,000 and up." Are we doing any kind of advertisement, or are we just doing it on a website of Edison Township? Can you also look into this? In the budget, have you put any money for teachers? When we're giving teachers, students, trips, somebody just talked about a trip, and I saw that. Teachers take their money, go to trips, but you are spending millions, hard-earned money of those taxpayers, and those teachers have to put their $50, their $100 to feed a child that they take with them, or they feed themselves. If we are sending it on behalf of Edison Township, we can allocate $500,000, maybe $200,000, maybe $100,000, at least give them $50 for the $50 that they spend, half of the money. When it comes to budgeting, and I think it's going to fall in my buddy's lap, but I just saw referendum, which Doug wants me to talk about, 3, 4, 5, 6, 4, page 3, page 4, page 5, page 6. What does it reads? Let me read it for you. And it's easy. Contract was awarded without competitive biddings. When you go shopping, you go to Macy's, JCPenney, you go to TJ Maxx, because that's what the damn shirt for. Macy's, $65, and TJ Maxx. Macy's sixty-five dollars and TJ Maxx is twenty-five. And I'm sure, Dr. Bregan, you've been there, your spouse must have been there, and all your spouses must have been there, because I shop in TJ Maxx too. So, when you're doing a budget for these millions of dollars, why aren't we doing competitive biddings? It is because we want to get rid of it. People are stupid and they're not gonna listen. They don't read. Today's the first day, you know what? My son came and tapped my shoulder. Dad, you're doing your homework? I says, no, I'm reading the Board of Education referendums. He says, dad, I'm proud of you. At least after ten years, you start reading the referendums and go get them. Because they're spending money, but they don't give it to us. When we need it for our lab, our other projects, our music for ten years, our athletic teams, our ANI programs, and others. So, guys, come on, you guys all educated. I don't have to preach every time I come, but you're looking at 16,000-plus students. Their lives in your hands for four years, ten years, twelve years, depend on when they moved here in Edison Township. And you guys are ruining it by just putting bids out, because you want to get rid of it. You want to use it, you want to do it quick. What the hell is the committees for? Give it to the finance committee. Make extra two committee. I'm sure Brian would be willing to work. Beryl, Mohan, Jerry, they're accommodative people. They can work. I'm sure they will do extra meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Oh, my six minutes over. I told you I needed twelve.
Six minutes flies, we'll have another period. Thank you. Dr. Bregan, would you like to answer any questions?
Well, I think there's a lot of information that was said there that it may be beneficial for me and Mr. Patel to sit down and go over, because I don't think you have all the information. Just on field trips, the budget's over $600,000 is allocated for field trips. Regarding the business administrator position, we've been without a full-time business administrator for over a year, and we have been actively pursuing. And we had, one of the discussions in closed session was pertaining to that. So, you know, there's an allegation that somehow we haven't been negligent in our duties, that's just not accurate. And then to somehow insinuate that somehow we haven't been fiscally responsible, again, not accurate and just not factual. And if that's what we want to do, is get up here and just make up things, that's fine. If you want to sit down and go over the facts and the information contained in the budget, I would love to have a meeting with you and go over it. Because we do have information that I think may be helpful for you to put the right information out there. Regarding our teachers, you know, our teachers are the core of what we do here, and I don't think you'd have anyone on this board or in the administration that don't believe that. I'd love to have bonuses and salaries that are higher for starting salaries. And I'm saying that publicly, because we want to get the best, the brightest, and the most amount of people we can. We have a collective bargaining agreement that prohibits us from deviating from what that structure is. And, you know, we're in a negotiation year this year, and I'm sure those discussions will take place. But I can't just give somebody $10,000, or $5,000, or $1,000 without it being collectively bargained. That's why we have separate units. We have five in this district, that we can't just change that and give people extra money. And I'm sure those will be discussions we have as we go through negotiations, beginning in the course of the school year. And I think that's all I got, but I think it would be beneficial, Mr. Patel, for us to meet and go over some of that information that may be helpful for you.
Very good, thank you. And you'll have six, you'll have a total of six minutes at the end. Excuse me. Very good, Mr. Patel. Any other public comments, resolutions only. Ms. Conway.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. Do I have to get the floor allowance?
Nope, just once.
Oh, because now at the town council meetings, you have to say your name and wait to be told that they have the floor now. So, it's...
What difference?
Okay, my question regarding...
Welcome here, Ms. Conway.
Thank you. I see that we got a new supervisor for transportation, and basically, I see that four bus drivers have resigned this month, and that we hired six new bus drivers this month. And I was wondering what the status is of the new buses. We were supposed to purchase thirty buses, and they were supposed to be in by June 30th, and I'd like to know what their status is. And of those thirty buses, do we have enough bodies to put in those thirty buses? Because it seems like, yes, we hire, but we're also losing people. So, are we able to utilize the new buses with employees to start in September, is my question? My next item is paraprofessionals. This happens constantly, and it's always been a sad feeling in my heart, because I know in special ed, there are, teachers and paras are moved around like pawns. But just this month, fourteen paraprofessionals have been transferred from one position to another. And I do know that it depends on the children's needs and the powers that be to put the paras where they're definitely needed. But it's still an ongoing thing, where you have one para going to one school, and then if you look further, another para is going from that school to another school. And I'm just hoping that you'll keep this in mind when, in future months, give it a second glance, that these people are very valuable employees and not just pawns for our district. I have another question, but it's not about a resolution, so I will come back, even though I only used three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Conway.
Thanks, Ms. Conway. Yeah, the bus drivers, I think last year around this time, we had twenty-five or twenty-six full-time bus drivers. And after tonight's agenda, I think we'll have about thirty-eight. We're still hiring. We'd like to get more, because the more bus drivers we have, the more routes we can do internally, which over time, I do believe will save us money and also provide us flexibility for trips and other things that take place. The buses are here. They were delivered, almost all of them, by the end of June. One or two were the first week of July, and they're beautiful. They're over in the lot that we built by Hoover. And I think we put the new buses in the older lot and moved some of the older buses into the new lot by the maintenance garage. So, yeah, we're still growing that, and we hope to, over time, have enough drivers to drive all of our buses and do more routes. Right now, the way the routes are, we have about 375 routes altogether. And internally, we're doing about 100 of those routes. So, that would mean those other 275 are contracted out. Over time, we'd like to continually bring that down as we get more and more bus drivers, so that we can do those routes on our own. Regarding the paraprofessionals, we do applaud them for what they do. They have one of the hardest jobs in the district, and they get paid the least amount of money. And anything we can do to help that be better for them and keep them maybe in their same place, in the same school, in the same class, I know Dr. Tuohy tries to do that as best he can, as you alluded to yourself, Mrs. Conway. Sometimes the needs of the children, whether they're one-to-one paras or the programs change. I will look into that, though. I know I did give Dr. Tuohy that charge, to try to keep people where they would like to be, as much and as, to the optimal, as best as we can. We can't always do that, because the needs do change. Some of our self-contained programs were moved this year to accommodate full-day kindergarten, and that would necessitate, if the program is longer in the building, that the paraprofessional would have to go with them as well. So, I hope I answered that for you.
Very good, thank you. Other public comments regarding resolutions only. Mr. Revnak.
Good evening, Matt Revnak, second vice, first Vice President ETA. I demoted myself. Just a question, actually, with the, a number of, there's a number of administrators that have been, being appointed. One of them's a principal at Ben Franklin School, and one's a vice principal at Thomas Jefferson Middle School. And their dates to be determined, I'm assuming they're employees currently in another district that need to be released. The assistant principal's not as big a deal, because obviously, and you have a longstanding principal there. But the principal at Ben Franklin, will this person be in the district for the start of the school year? And if not, who will be running that building to start the school year? That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Bregan.
Yeah, you know, we had discussions about this, actually, in closed session and otherwise. We do expect, when people leave our district, that they honor the contracts that they have, right? You know, and sometimes they don't, but our expectation is if you're supposed to give sixty days notice, that we would expect you to do that. And it's the same on the other side, right? The people that are currently working in other districts have a contract, whether it's sixty days, thirty days, ninety days, I'm not sure. But our expectation would be if these people get approved tonight, and it's, you know, voted on the agenda, they'll get notified tonight or tomorrow morning, and then they'll give their notice. And perhaps if their superintendent can find a replacement and let them out earlier, that's great. If not, there isn't. But we will put somebody in place. We won't leave that burden on the people that are there. And we do have some sub-administrators that are also being approved on this agenda. So, we'll try, we'll do our best as we can to make sure everybody's up to speed, and we have an administrative presence in each of those buildings.
Other public comments, resolutions only. Anyone else? Okay. I'd like to start with the personnel report. I make a motion to approve the personnel report. Do I have a second?
Motion, second.
Mr. Beryl Patel, second. Roll call, please.
Dr. Hadeh?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Barel Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
I have to abstain on coaching, but the rest of it, yes.
And Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, I make a motion to approve the Administration Curriculum and Instruction and People's Special Services Report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shi, second. Roll call, please.
Dr. Hadeh?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Barel Patel?
Yes, on everything, with a comment that, on the two administrations, two C and two E, and all related financial items, please present to the Budget Planning and Oversight Committee in the future. Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, I make a motion to approve the Finance Report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Beryl Patel, second. Roll call, please.
Dr. Hadeh?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Barel Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes, on everything, except abstain on check number 174385, 2019-20 subscription bus refund.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes, with the exception, I have to abstain on check number 173715 for the amount of $19.73.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have committee reports. Mr. Beryl Patel, you're up first with the Budget and Oversight Committee Report.
Thank you, Board President.
Thank you.
Right, so, we had a Budget Planning and Oversight Committee meeting on June 21st. Board members in attendance were myself, Brian Rivera, Jerry Shi, and Doc Schneider. Administrators were Dr. Bregan, Ann Clark, and Dr. Adorelli. The vendors who were in attendance were Gary Goldfarb, Mike Morrow, and Jim Finn from Brown and Brown Insurance Company. The businesses discussed was insurance, because we transitioned to the new broker for the insurance services. So, they discussed quite a few stuff in details, and we had to make some decisions with reserves, and there will be a follow-up meeting. All the details are on the website, in the agenda, so anyone can feel free to take a look. I don't want to bore any of you here and spend time on reading the whole thing, but please feel free to take a look at the meeting minutes. And the action item was, we'll reconvene in August to look at the numbers that were, some of the numbers that were discussed, and that's gonna come up for month of June. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Township Liaison Committee Reports. Ms. White?
Actually, I have two for you.
If you could just move the microphone towards you?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, the first one is for Tuesday, June 14th. The Township Board of Ed Liaison Committee was held on Tuesday, June 14, beginning at 11:00 a.m. and ending at 12:00 p.m. at the Education Center. In attendance, in person, were Council VP, Joyce Ship Freeman, Councilwoman Margot Harris, Board of Ed members, Moeen Patel and Beryl Patel, Superintendent Dr. Bernard Bregan, HR Director Dr. Edward Adorelli, Deputy Police Chief Robert Dudas, Sergeant Douglas Turner, and Virginia White Committee Chair. In attendance via Zoom were Assemblyman Rob Karabincheck, Robert Deal, Chief of Staff, Master Plan Coordinator, Chief of Staff representing Mayor Joshi Ray Alcantara, Business, Township Business Administrator Sonia Alvez Viveros, and BOE Vice President Shivi Persad Matiker. We began our meeting with Bob Deal, and Bob provided us with information related to the master plan. The committee meets monthly and represents all areas of our town. This committee will cover many issues and will hopefully resolve many existing problems. The last time the master plan was addressed was approximately 20 years ago. The committee is planning to complete this project in one year. Assemblyman Karabincheck was a returning guest. He updated us on different grants and programs that are available to all school districts. There's a pilot program for electric school buses. In addition, there's a grant for bus safety cameras, oh, I'm sorry, bus security cameras, both inside and outside of the vehicles. We asked him to provide us with information for our grant writer, and he did that. Ray Alcantara represented Mayor Joshi. The mayor is moving forward on many projects, from the water park to the community garden. I asked about the proposed recreation center that will be adjacent to the Jets football field. It's supposed to house areas for wrestling, cheerleading, and basketball. I suggested that they include an ice rink. We have an ice hockey team that has to pay for ice time to practice and has to travel great distances to do so. Deputy Chief Dudas gave us an update on the junior and senior police academies. Enrollment has increased particularly for the senior police academy. The juniors are not far behind. This is great progress. In addition, they're providing drug education information for our health classes, covering opioids, vaping, and the dangers of marijuana. Sergeant Turner brought us up to date with progress regarding the traffic issues that are being addressed around town. Jackson Avenue is moving in a positive direction. He's also dealing with traffic issues at Woodbrook and James Monroe. They're looking for signage out here, and I think they already have it. In addition, they're using flags to cross Plainfield Road by Woodrow Wilson Middle School for now. We're looking into New Dover Road and Tingly Lane to access, to assess potential ways to help. Overall, this, overall, all discussed traffic issues are moving forward in a positive direction. I introduced our new Township Business Administrator to the committee. Her name is Sonia Aviles Viveros. She will be included whenever she's available, and we are so pleased to have her on the board. The Edison Arts Society has been very busy. They dedicated a new gazebo in Papiani Park. They introduced a new exhibit at the municipal building on the third floor. If you have the opportunity, please go visit. Three scholarships were awarded to undergrads. There was one each for JP Stevens and Edison High and Middlesex College. Lastly, the painted pianos are back on Ambory Avenue. Our next meeting is scheduled for July the 12th, respectfully submitted, Virginia White. Okay, the Township BOE Liaison Committee was held on Tuesday, July 12th at the Education Center, beginning at 11:00 a.m. and ending at approximately 12:15. In attendance, in person, were Assemblymen Sturley Stanley, Legislative Director, A2 Assemblyman Stanley, Verinda Sood, Councilwoman Margot Harris, Councilman Rich Brisher, Deputy Police Chief Bob Dudas, Sergeant Lisa Camino, BOE Members Dr. Hadek, Moeen Patel, Virginia White, Dr. Bernard Bregan, and Dr. Adorelli, Director of Human Resources. In attendance via Zoom were Shivaie Persad Matiker and Ray Alcantara, Chief of Staff to Mayor Joshi. Assemblyman Stanley began our meeting, and he spoke of existing, of extending for one year the useful life of school buses. He also stated that the Motor Vehicle Commission can also extend the life of buses an additional year. He noted that electric school bus, the electric school bus bill will be passing the Assembly electric school bus, the electric school bus bill will be passing the Assembly and Senate and is awaiting the governor, governor's signature. I asked, or inquired about funding for the security cameras both inside and outside the school buses, as well as GPS location systems being installed on all buses. Mrs. Matiker expressed that all school buses need to have cameras, and she also asked if the state would fund all hazardous bus routes. Assemblyman Stanley is sp, is sponsoring a bill, A three zero five six, in the assemble, assemblies, I'm sorry, in the assembly focusing on student mental health. The bill would grant students five days of excused mental health days from school. Assemblyman Stanley asked if our district is actively addressing student me, mental health issues. Dr. Breagan provided him with an overview of our district's responses and procedures that we have in place to address these critical issues. Assemblyman Stanley said that Edison was well ahead of the curve. Lastly, he mentioned another bill that allows for one absence to attend government functions. In addition, he proposed wo, working with Mayor Joshi to develop a recreation board that consists of citizens to develop long-range improvement plans. Ray Alcantara spoke about the new sports complex being created on Central Ave and shared some preliminary drawings of the building. Deputy Chief Dudas introduced Sergeant Lisa Camino to the group. Sergeant Samino will be replacing Sergeant Turner, who has been promoted, you know, so, we're so proud of him. Uh, Deputy Chief Dudas also spoke about traffic concerns for arrival and dismissal at Woodrow Wilson Middle School. They're using flags to assist with the crossing. The updated traffic pattern at Jackson during the arrival and dismissal times for Hoover will remain in place for the upcoming school year. The crossing guard issue has not been fully resolved, but they're working on coming up with solutions for the school year, including the possibility of privatizing. He also updated us on the plans to offer more counseling and supportive services for families in crisis. The summer police academies for the middle and high schools are filling up and are scheduled to take place in the coming, upcoming weeks. Deputy Chief Dudas spoke of his goal to have more officers in school to foster positive relationships with students. The Edison Arts Society, a photography exhibit by Patricia McCarthy Rubin will be at the municipal building beginning July twenty-eighth to September twenty-ninth. If you have the opportunity, stop up and view it. A new mural of the flag raising on Iwo Jima will be placed on VFW thirty-one seventeen building on National Road. The next liaison meeting is scheduled for September, September the thirteenth, respectfully submitted, Virginia White. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. White.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Shi.
So, um, Mrs. White, good, good job.
Thank you.
As far as the ice rink, uh, on the second meeting when the drawing was presented, is the ice rink there?
Which one?
The ice rink.
Uh, I, I brought it up again. I did. You know, I don't, I don't give up on those things.
Yes, please.
And, uh, you know, I didn't really get an answer, but they are going to look into it, and that's the beginning.
Okay. All right. So, um, you know, um, did, uh, Assemblyman Sterling talk about the GPS bill that was being sponsored by Nancy Pinkin and, um, uh, Mr. Rob Karabincheck before? Uh, cause we're talking about cameras here, um, we, they talked about the GPS on all the buses.
Okay, uh, we, you know, our, our new buses all have GPSs, if, uh, I, I think I'm right.
Yeah, this for the, for the whole state.
We have all our new buses, and then, but the contracted buses do not possess them. We, you know, they are, you know, as I said, uh, Assemblyman Karabincheck provided us with, uh, you know, all kinds of literature and grants that Dr. Breagan was going to review and pass on to our grants, uh, writer, and hopefully, you know, we'll get some good feedback from that. Assemblyman, uh, Stanley is, you know, he, this is his second time back here. You know, he's a very, very welcome guest, and he's always very, very, um, you know, helpful, and he advises well, and he does offer an assist in every way that he can. He was, his biggest concern was the mental health bill that he's trying to get through. That was very, very important to him, as well as it should be.
Just, uh, one last question. What is the status on the Stelton School?
Stelton School was not-
What's the ne, what's the next step?
[laughing]
What, what is the next step that we need to do on the-
You know how I love Stelton School, you all know that. But Stelton School was not on my agenda, so I don't, don't really have good answers for you. We're waiting, we are still waiting. It is by no means forgotten. It really isn't. Um, it's just that right now, we're at a, you know, what should I call it, a hiccup in the road, you know, and, uh, we just have to wait a little bit more time. But I promise you, I will get back to you with something on Stelton School.
Thank you so much. I know you won't, you won't, uh, you won't let go of that. That's your baby.
I just don't. Now I have that Stelton School and the ice rink.
Thank you, now you have two.
Board President, can I add on to something?
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Ms. White, Mr. Patel.
Yes. So, Ms. White, um, with that liaison meeting, the last question that was asked was that question by Richard Brescher and myself as well. So, hopefully, they will act upon it and try to, you know, honor what we were, what we started last year in regards to Stelton School. And I know that Jeannie is going to be on top of that, because I will also be with her, asking the same question for every meeting. So, let's get it on the agenda for next time, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Now we gotta wait.
Okay, Ms. Matiker.
So, the Performance Monitoring Committee had an internal meeting on July twenty-first, from four fifteen PM to five twenty-one PM. Uh, the administrators in attendance were Dr. Breagan, Dr. Alderelli, and Richard Benedict. Board members were myself, Shiva Prasad Madukar Chair, Virginia White, and Beetle Patel. Uh, the committee discussed many things. Uh, among the first item was, parents had not rece, had not received any notification on subscription busing after filling the form. Uh, the administration updated the committee and said that only four hundred out of two thousand six hundred subscription busing applications had been processed. Given the lag, the committee expressed concern. The administration said they will get more support staff to assist in processing applications to expedite it. The committee suggested communicating with residents that are affected via email, and thank you, Dr. Breagan, for the email that went out. Um, so the, so they'll update all parents about the status of busing, and everyone will know what to expect. This will also be helpful for parents who have filled in the form but have not received an acknowledgement so that there are no last-minute issues. The administration suggested that parents who have not received an acknowledgement of their subscription busing application should reach out to Richard Benedict. Uh, the committee inquired about the status of bus contracts for the upcoming school year, and administration said that contracts have been signed, and at this point, they do not envision any issues. Uh, we also discussed GPS. These will be available on all district-owned buses for the upcoming school year. Parents will be able to download an app and track buses in real time. Uh, Dr. Breagan said, on future busing contracts from outside vendors, GPS will be included. Um, committee suggested that for students who are not on these tracked buses, a system of text notification should be in place so that alternative arrangements can be made if, if buses are running late or will not come at all because of some unforeseen reason. This will help students get to school on time. Uh, the administration also said, talked about free busing and said that it's based on the shortest distance from the home address to the school based on state law and not on the bus stop location. Therefore, there'll always be homes on the border all around the district where neighbors may have different busing status. The committee expressed, uh, concern on everything directed to, through technology. Um, this encompasses many areas of enrollment, transportation, um, lunch. Uh, community pass was also discussed. Who oversees it? Where can residents reach out for assistance if they need help? Dr. Ben, uh, Breagan asked Mr. Benedict to make arrangements so residents can easily access information. The importance of having a live person who does, who residents can reach out to over the phone was also discussed. Uh, the committee also discussed how all outward-facing border fed departments need to be oriented from a customer service perspective, so residents seeking services are able to have a positive experience. Um, enrollment, uh, the committee just was informed that enrollment was still lower than ex, than expected. Uh, the committee suggested importance of completing enrollment as soon as possible. It was suggested to have additional people screen or documentation before we begin the screening process. The administration is considering moving the enrollment to respective schools from next year onwards. Uh, the committee was also updated on kindergarten. Uh, the committee inquired about summer school and about how students were faring because of very high temperatures recently. Uh, the committee was informed that all classes are only being held in air-conditioned rooms. Uh, the committee was also updated on parent portal, which will remain open through the summer. Um, portion for viewing classes is closed and will open during the last week of August. Meanwhile, parents will be able to fill, uh, fill out mandatory forms before that. Finally, the, um, the committee, uh, discussed communication and how communication is key. Um, the district needs to be proactive. It is important to make everyone aware of problems, what is being done to correct them, um, and we, and how, uh, so that we can have things up and running. We serve the public and have to keep them informed. Submitted by Shiva Madukar. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matiker. Um, I think this would be an appropriate time to ask you if, that was a week ago, so we've had progress in some of these areas?
I, I was informed this afternoon, we, we tried to triage and put as many people as we could on the, uh, subscription bus applications. As you know, last year, that was an issue for us with, uh, some of our transportation concerns. And, uh, before the meeting, I was told the twenty-six hundred outstanding subscription applications were processed and the students were placed on buses. And I believe parent contacts are taking place now or will be shortly there coming. So, yeah, good, great progress.
Thank you.
It was a result of that meeting that we, um, got the information collectively and decided to triage and put all the resources there, so worked that really well.
And it would also be an appropriate time to ask you, Dr. Breagan, how's enrollment right now?
Actually, I had it on my thing, but I didn't read the whole thing. But, Dr. Breagan can talk about it.
Sure, sure. You know, one of the concerns we had for enrollment this year was with our kindergarten. Obviously, moving from full-day kindergarten. Last year's kindergarten class was about seven hundred and fifty students, and not everybody came. That would traditionally come for first grade because it was only half-day. So, um, we anticipated our, this year's kindergarten enrollment would be somewhere in the ballpark of what last year's first grade would be. That seemed to make sense, at about eleven hundred fifty students. As of today, we have a thousand seventy-three students for kindergarten in process. Um, they haven't all cleared and submitted all the paperwork, but they've been, um, entered into the system. So, I feel pretty good about that. That's within, um, you know, a hundred students of what we thought it would be for September. So, we're continually working on that, continually trying to get the information advertised, and so people don't wait till the last minute to enroll, um, which they often sometimes do. But if they do, we have a plan. We will triage that as well and try to make sure nobody's waiting long or outside in the heat and process it as quickly as I can. I encourage any parents that want to register their students in the district, please do it ASAP. Waiting, um, till late August or close to September just stresses the entire system, and it's hard to process it. There is some paperwork that has to be, um, you have to make sure and it's vetted that it's all supplied and we have all that, and then we have to process a student, put them in the right grade levels. Sometimes some of the students need to be screened, and that takes a little bit of time, which frustrates people when school's starting the next day. So, I encourage anyone and everyone that hears this, if you're enrolling a child in Edison Public Schools, try to do it ASAP.
Dr. Breagan, um-
Very good. Mr. Rivera?
I actually registered my daughter last week. Um, she's coming here for first grade, and, uh, the process went pretty smooth.
Awesome.
So, thank you for, to enrollment.
Did they know who you were?
My wife was, uh, a little lazy. She didn't go change her last name, so, uh-
Oh, so it was a secret shopper?
-her last name is different than mine.
It was a secret shopper, then. Good.
It went well.
Good, very good. Okay, excellent. Thank you for those committee reports. Upcoming meetings, um, about a month from now, Tuesday, August twenty-third, we have a combined caucus and public meeting here at James Monroe at six PM. So, we'll be back here. It's not on a Thursday, it's on a Tuesday, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Next, uh, board member open discussion. Um, Ms. White, I know you've read two very, very long liaison committee reports, but I'd love to start with you anyway. Do you have anything to add?
Well, I don't think we said anything about graduation, which was absolutely beautiful. I mean, it, it truly was. You know, like, the high point for me of being a board member is going to graduation. And I was able to attend both of them, you know, I missed you, Elizabeth, you know, but, uh, you know, it was just beautiful. They did a great job. It was at the rack, and I think it just went very, very well. Um, JP Stevens had a drum line that was like incredible. Edison High, you know, their band was super, you know. It was, you know, just a beautiful thing, so, I thought I'd mention a congratulations, class of twenty-twenty-two. You're ready to attack the world, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. And thank you for putting together those township liaison meetings. I know that it's not easy to get all of those important people into one room. So, kudos to you. Mr. Shi?
Okay, um, first, I'd like to congratulate Donald Badvek. Just got appointed to the principal of, uh, the principal of Lindonell School. Um, you know, that school is a community school and, uh, needs a lot of love, and I wish you nothing but the success, and, um, you know, congratulations again. Uh, since this is a combined meeting, um, my number of questions to Dr. Breagan might exceed my normal quota, so I apologize ahead of time. It's two meetings, so I could have split into two, but, you know, it's, it's combined into one. So, one was already touched base on it, is the GPS on the busing. I'm so glad that, that we're finally, um, having a GPS tracking after two years of asking, Dr. Breagan. I think it's two years, right?
At least.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, I hope that will help our students, um, you know, as they don't have to wait, uh, you know, uh, forty-five minutes outside in the cold. Uh, the other things related to the busing, and you, you alluded on, is, um, do we have a waitlist for subscription buses? So, the, the people who wants to get on the bus, uh, but they don't have it yet, but if we have enough number of students, we can possibly provide a bus, so that's a question. The second is the, the turf field of JP Stevens. Uh, where is it? Um, you know, it's been going on for quite a lot of time. The, the third one is about the parent portal. It, it mentioned a little bit in the, um, uh, committee report. Um, we have always been in the past that when you tried, in, in the late August, um, changing password and stuff like that, it's, it's always a struggle. Um, we making a head wave in there to make things easier, uh, for the parents and the kids. Um, the fourth one is, I've been, Peng asking this, and I also asked if we can put it into the policy, is the status of residence verification. We received the tax record from the township. Um, have we started, you know, programming to verify the residences? Uh, the, the fifth one, you already touched on it, which is, you know, uh, what I'm saying, how many bus drivers we have hired, it was also asked in, in, in the public, and how many routes we can cut, you know, outsourcing routes, um, and, and having internally. And I know before the school starts, we have to have all the routes, and if we bid out the routes and then we hired our, um, our internal drivers, uh, and we start going and going, um, let our internal folks handle that, will there be any, any, any penalty, um, for, um, breaking the, quote-unquote, breaking the contract? Right? Um, what's the latest number of students enrolled in the, in the garden, kindergarten? And the, okay, the, the other one is the Finance Resolution Number Fifty. We have a, um, we approve the, the, the premium for the, uh, risk insurance. Uh, just wanted to see what is the dollar amount compared to what we have budgeted. And the last question is, it's, um, um, we have in, uh, some of the, the schools that we have, uh, moved the students from kindergarten, um, we, we are preparing the, the, the schools for, um, kindergarten, and, uh, we have some, some air conditionings in the, um, maybe, uh, elementary school for special needs students. Now they're moving into the other classrooms. Are these air conditioning units being moved at the same time, um, if we are combining the, the kids together into, 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 uh, into rooms that, that they might not have, uh, air conditioning? Um, so, that's the, that's- So, that's the, that's all.
That's it?
Sorry.
No worries.
I apologize.
Yeah, we talked about the GPS on the busing, and, you know, we're going to have about 60 of our own buses that'll have a transponder that correlates with our Transfinder software that the parents on those buses will get access to an application for their phone that they can learn the location of the bus and where it is, and if it's going to be late or if it's close to the stop, so that's going to be really helpful. Moving forward, I'd like to, if that proves to be very successful, to request it in our contracted bids as well. We didn't do that, so we can't, you know, expect them all to have it at this point. Currently, there is no waitlist for subscription busing, that all the requests that have been submitted have been processed as far as before this meeting today. So, we're going to stay on top of that as we were made intimately aware that was an area of concern for last year, so we'll continue to stay on top of that and try to make sure that doesn't happen again. The JPS turf field question is very timely. We did get information just a short while ago from the Department of Environmental Protection that we can tentatively move forward. There's one little area that we have to certify as not being a wetlands, so that's right now with our architect who's working on that project, which is DMR. We hope to bring some more information to that, to our next committee meeting, and talk about what the timeframe would be for that. I know the parents were anxious about that. That's over a year ago, if I remember correctly. The parent portal is now currently open, but we do intend to close it next Monday for maintenance and rollover, but I was told it would be back up and running by the end of the week. And, you know, sometimes the schedules are not shared until closer to the start of school to make sure we have all that allocated with the right teachers and the right student schedules. But we will be on top of that. If there's any concerns, please direct them to my office so that if somebody gets locked out or can't get their password, we don't anticipate a problem, but if they have it, let me know. The status of the resident verification, I know we talked about that, we did get the files from the recreation department, I'm sorry, from the township department, and we're comparing those now. That comparison has not taken place. I reviewed it with our attendance department today. The attendance investigators are not in in the summer. As soon as they do come in, and they come in before the start of school, that'll be their main charge, to compare that list from the township with our list from our student database, and any anomalies that present themselves will be investigated, but we have not done that yet, Mr. Shi.
I will continue to ask.
I know, I know, and I'll make sure we do.
I'm sorry.
Regarding the bus drivers, as we kind of talked about that a little bit, and we do have a couple of bus drivers that we're not going to assign to start the school year to triage just in case somebody drops routes like they did last year and so on and so forth, you know, to be more prepared. And then we also had a couple of times when our own people are out sick, obviously, or they have personal days. So, we may be overstuffed a little to start the school year, and I'd rather do that until we figure it out as we move forward. So, I don't think we could get, if we have a contract, as I said earlier regarding employment and staff, I wouldn't expect us not to honor it and drop it. So, again, we may be a little overstuffed in September, and I'd rather be there than understaffed, and we'll figure that sweet spot out as we move forward. As we set on the agenda tonight, we have a new supervisor of transportation, so, you know, they'll get their feet wet this year, and we'll have a better understanding as the year progresses. Again, I'm anticipating a much better scenario than last year. We had those 50 routes that were dropped on Labor Day weekend, which was really difficult for us, but also, I understand, for our community members that had to find transportation. The kindergarten enrollment, I thought I mentioned that already. I think we're at 1,073 right now, and that are in process, not fully completed. They may be missing a piece of information or not, 960 are fully complete. And again, we estimated somewhere around 1,150, so we're very close to that mark. And again, as I said earlier, if you're going to register your child in Edison Public Schools, please do it as soon as possible and don't wait till the last minute. Our risk insurance premium was a bit higher this year than we budgeted. We budgeted about 2.4 million. As you see on the agenda tonight, it came in at about 2.8. We do expect some monies back from, oh, it's alluding me, from the Jersey State for workers' compensation and for some other things, but it did go up a little bit. And what people don't always understand when we have insurance settlements and things like that, that impacts our overall liability and what our coverage will be moving forward. So, we do have a new risk carrier and a broker that's going to help us actively manage that moving forward, so we'll stay on top of that. And Mr. Shi, I forgot your last question.
Last question.
AC units, AC units.
AC units, yeah.
The air conditioning units, obviously, we're here in this building for this meeting and towards the end of July because there is climate control and air conditioning, and, you know, that's really something that we look to move forward as we had discussions with that at our committee, the whole for infrastructure improvements. But air conditioning as it now is situated is if a staff member or a student has a medical necessity that we put it in the rooms, and we have it there. If that student or staff member moves to a different location that doesn't have it and they have the same requirement, we would obviously have to have air conditioning. So, we're working on that right now, but ideally, everybody would want it, right? If September, it's going to be 95 degrees, it would be great for everyone to have it. Right now, we don't have that capacity, but we're working towards it.
So, the ACs are moving with the kids? That's...
They are, if the need...
If they're needed, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you. I have basically have three comments. The first one I do want to do is congratulate all of our new appointments. Welcome to Edison Public Schools. I look forward to working with all of yous. The second thing I wanted to do, I wanted to thank, on behalf of the Board of Ed, I wanted to thank Dr. Bregan and his team and our food services for the summer meals program. Thank you for listening to the concerns of our parents in having two distribution sites. Today, my wife was actually driving down by Edison High, and she noticed there was an older gentleman with either a child or a grandchild with a cart going to pick up food, so obviously, he didn't have transportation to go to JP Stevens, so our families appreciate that you put another distribution site at Edison High.
Just an update on that. At John P. Stevens Day, there were 575 pickups, and Edison High School was 500. That's a total of over 10,600 meals.
Wow.
It was well-needed, and I'm glad we were able to facilitate it. There was a problem initially getting it up and running very quickly, that's why we did JP first, but the plan was always to expand it to both sides of town.
The residents, I'm sure appreciate it, so thank you.
Yeah, it's awesome.
And finally, I want to say happy birthday to my wife. I apologize that I'm not there, but I promise I'll get home soon, and hopefully, I stay out of the doghouse, so happy birthday, Nancy, I love you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Happy birthday, Nancy. Ms. Madhukar?
Just want to thank anyone and everyone in the transportation department, whoever worked to expedite these subscription busing, because it seems like in five business days, they were able to process more than 2,000 applications. And that's, at the meeting, I remember we were told that it would not be done until mid-August, and for them to do this within five days must have been, a lot of people must have been really working overtime. And I just want to, if any parent is watching, just want to remind that if you haven't received an acknowledgement after signing up, then please reach out to Richard Benedict. That would be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bureau Patel?
Thank you, Board President. Okay, so, one of the things that happened this week was amazing. Dr. Bregan, the rendering and the progress of all the projects, the email that was sent out to the parents, that's very good. That's awesome. So, hopefully, we can continue that every month, and people would love it. And hopefully, we can have Lincoln and EHS completed by beginning of the school year. It's not, it's very challenging, but the auditorium and at EHS and the Lincoln, let's hope for the best. The summer schools, feedback has been very good for, there have been no hiccups, no issues, and parents and the students have been loving it, so thank you for that. I would second what Brian Rivera said about the meals, so thank you, thank you for that. I want to ask a question about, in the committee, we approved the school wish list, so is everything on track for them to get in September?
I do believe so.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And one of the things I asked was, on 30th of April, was about implementing a search feature on the website, so if anyone searches something through the committee, through the meeting minutes from the past, they can get a quick search result. So, if you can, please take a look at that. Right? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Ms. Peng? Mr. Mohan Patel?
Thank you, Board President. Just wanted to add a few more comments and questions. Dr. Bregan, what was the criteria for choosing our bond council? I think you might have addressed it, but I'm just curious.
We looked at a couple of things. One was, you know, what the cost structure was, but as well as their familiarity and their reputation as far as working in that field, and that was the criteria that we used to make the determination.
Great. The reason why I ask is, when we had a Jerry's referendum three years ago, that was the same bond council that we actually were looking into, and at that time, we had vice president and board member that was running for candidacy, using that as a platform, basically saying that that wasn't, that was not the right candidate, or that was not the right bond council to go because it was some kind of quid pro quo here. I was just curious as to why that was, you know, because if that was the case and that was out in the public back then, I'm sure that's going to be coming up again, saying, why did we use the same bond council? So, I'm glad you clarified it, the reason why. The other thing I wanted to add is, in regards to the BA position, we were actually looking for this position for a while, and I don't know if you remember, there was a great resignation where we had over 400 million jobs being lost, or 4 million jobs being lost at the time. So, it was not that we weren't looking for a BA, we were actually in the process of finding the right BA, because this position is second, in a way. If you look at it, it's a $300 million budget here that we're dealing with. So, in order for us to get the right position filled with the right candidate, it takes a while, and we went through a lot of applications. We actually almost hired somebody, but at the last minute, that person wanted to do a remote job, which required a full-time job staying in place, so that's the reason why we don't have it filled. But I'm glad we're in the process of finding someone soon. The other thing is, all right, basically, that was it in regards to those two points that we just made. I just want to make sure that everyone knows the clarity that the reason why we chose this bond council is because they're experts in what they do, not because there's a relationship anywhere here. I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Mr. Haydock. Dr. Haydock, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I second a lot of the things that everybody's saying. Thank you to the administrators that put a process together this summer to hire wonderful staff. All those staff members are approved. Thank you, Dr. Bregan, for approving a principal that's going to be wonderful at Lyndon Al. Mr. Plafiat, you're going to be great there. Good luck on that position. I know the only sad person is sitting right next to you, Mr. Dugan. We'll have plenty of tissues for you there at Menlo Park, because I know you're losing a good quality administrator in that building, so great job and good luck. We know teacher quality is the number-one research school factor, so having quality teachers approved this evening takes us a step further for everything our students deserve in this town. And also, I just want to compliment Ms. Cirillo and Mrs. Blevins. They have some wonderful students that had the opportunity to attend a talent show at the Hail Park. Those kids are so talented. When they come back to school, I'm sure they're going to tell their teachers, Mrs. Blevins especially, because, as we all know, the motto over there at Woodrow Wilson is, "Reach for the stars." They're all stars because they sang, they danced, and they're going to be writing all about it when they return, and I know teachers say that. What did you do this summer? They have plenty to show off and talk about, so great job on that end. And thanks to the board for moving things together on our infrastructure, the time spent this summer just updating the community. I think the feedback I'm getting in my neighborhoods is that, you know, the projects are well-received. Air conditioning's of high priority, and I know that's on our list too, but the building structures and putting students in classes that they can actually move and having teachers have the ability to teach lessons with a little bit of room in the class and not overcrowding is a big initiative moving forward for our town. So, keep up the good work, everybody, and have a good rest of the summer, be safe.
Thank you, Dr. Haydock. I'd just like to close out board member comments with the excitement of full-day kindergarten, right? So, we have more public comment, yeah? No, 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 I'm good. Thank you. I'm getting some help from the audience. As I was saying, we're about to embark on full-day kindergarten for the first time in a long time in Edison Township, and it's huge. I think about all of the money. I have three kids in the district that all have to go to private full-day kindergarten. I don't think it's debatable that full-day kindergarten gets academically your students farther ahead. And I know it's difficult. I know at the building levels, it's not going to be easy to do this. The administration, the building principals, the teachers, the paras, everybody has to come together to get this done. It might not be perfect, but I think it's going to work with all of the talent we have in the leadership positions. And most importantly, for the taxpayers, the amount of money I could have saved by not sending my kids to private full-day kindergarten is enormous with three kids, right? It should be our task as a board to get a little greedy. Pre-K 4, pre-K 3. The amount of money for three children and for my household, if I had pre-K 3, pre-K 4, and kindergarten paid for, it would be tens and tens of thousands of dollars. I don't, maybe even six figures, actually, if I think about it. And academically, that is where we need to be in Edison Township. We have to strive for that. I know there's a real estate issue, there's infrastructure things. We just don't have space for everything that we want to have space for, but that's what this board, I think unanimously, is really behind. We want to strive for, obviously, the academic excellence, and this is just one piece of the puzzle. So, in a little bit over a month, we have 1,073 students that are now going to be saving their parents' money, right? This board made a decision and saved, I can't imagine the enrollment in private kindergarten going down and how much they're losing, but I don't care. So, this is very exciting. As a board, I think we're very, very thrilled to give this to our taxpayers, and it's only going to get better from here, I hope. So, with that said, I want to turn it over to public comment. As usual, it's six minutes. I've already read the disclaimer, so I'm ready to go. Mr. Manesh, I'm going to go first. Ms. Anita, you're next, okay?
I think you should have a meeting here every time my wish come true on a first shot four minutes. I love it. Let me go back to what Mohan just said, appointment of bond council. Dr. Bregan, isn't this is the one where we did $200 million bond, and you spent some of your money to get this approved, and it didn't work? Do you think it's going to work this time? It was defeated twice by township, and we're spending money again with the same company. Think about it. I mean, we are spending taxpayers' money. Financial services, again, it's part of the referendum things. You are doing the same thing, repeat, and people in this township do remember, because we are all senior citizens, including myself, one year from now, and we remember pretty good, especially the wives. They remember since the day you get married to today. So, remember, those ladies help out the husbands, and the referendum gets defeated every time. All right? Audit services, when we saying, I just realized while I was looking at the things, price increased so much this year. If this is the same company worked for us last year, why is the price a huge increase? Not a small, a huge increase, and there's waste of taxpayers' money. Other thing is, I just spoke to one of the parents. She's probably still around. She's not. She spoke to me. She goes, "I call your math administrator, Ms. Loaf. She never get back to her, not once, not twice, three times." So, I told her, "Why don't you speak? I'll stand by you if you're afraid." She goes, "Nope. My kids told me, 'Don't say anything, Mom. We're going to be in trouble in school.'" When they go to school, if your administrator in your office doesn't help, this parent stands outside and then she leaves. Come on, it just happened in this meeting, and I'm sure, Mr. President, you probably saw her when you went out to the bathroom too. She was standing right outside, and she felt bad. I can't get any help. Transportation, we need to have a camera there. Look at the abuse that teach students are getting. I just got a text message from one of the parents. "Manesh, make sure you talk about it. I was abused a few days ago. I was really abused." And I told her, "I will take a meeting with you, Dr. Bregan, and try to bring the parents in, if she's willing to come." Listen, we are here to help them. We're getting paid. Whenever we hire somebody, they're getting paid to work for the taxpayer, and if this is abuse they get, that's not good. The other thing I was going to say was, you says 1,073 kids in pre-K. We are 30 days away from opening the schools again. We are 30 days away from opening the schools again. Did you talk to Realtors Association? I don't know if anybody here is Realtor. I'm a Realtor. There's 16 to 18 houses up for closing within next one week. And guess what? It's in one office alone, and if that's in Edison alone, we have 20-plus offices of Realtors. How many house closings is there? Somebody, please go on Realtors.com and find out how many houses available in Edison Township. And you'll be shocked how many is up for sale. Because when the parents realize their kids are done, they go to college, they move out. They go to Peace Caraway, they go to East Brunswick, and they move out of here because they achieved what they want from J.P. Stevens and Edison High. The other thing I will tell you is, we talked about cricket last time. Somebody just mentioned. There was a private meeting with one of you, I don't know who, they were, I won't mention on the board. There were promised bathrooms. They paid the fees, bathroom was not accessed. What are we doing? We telling these taxpayers, and will the candidates who are good on this board? Come on. Once you promise, try to keep the promise. If it costs us something, there's a ways to get back to that. The other thing is, Dr. Bragan, I got 54 minutes to say this. Dr. Bragan, you say you don't have $10,000, $5,000, $3,000. Teachers are not asking for that money. They're asking for $50, $100 for their trips. Not much. And my last question is, after all reconciliation of your finances, I'm sure Beryl and Doug's going to have a white hat by tomorrow morning. How much money did you guys overspend, or how much money did you guys save? And if it's saved, where is it? If it's overspent, how are you going to get it? Thank you. I still got 15 minutes, buddy.
Thank you.
Take any of that? Board?
Yeah. Like I said earlier, Manesh, perhaps us sitting down and going over and having a meeting would be helpful, because we're, we're not doing any referendum. So I don't know what that reference was, but one of the things I heard was there was a parent, at least one or two, that had a concern with their child that wasn't met. If that ever happens, contact my office directly. Email me, phone me. I don't want any parent or any child feeling that they're not being, their needs aren't being met, and especially you used the word abused. If that ever happens to anyone, we would want to know right away. So please get that information to me. I forgot what the last question was.
If we have money left over, where is it?
How much we overspent?
Understood. We did, we did not overspend any, in, in, in any areas, and we did at the June board meeting, any excess surplus that we had, up to an amount of $9 million, I believe, we were going to put into an insurance reserve fund for our self-insured insurance program.
Thank you.
Board President?
Yes.
Can I answer a few of the questions he had? I addressed, he brought up, so I want to-
Briefly, sure.
Sure. Just, just to add on to the note, you said a lot of houses are being sold, Realtor offices, and that is true, I see that as well. The reason why they came to the township is because of our school systems, and you could agree with that, right? Hundred percent. So now, when the time comes for investing into this, into the schools, and we have a referendum that's going to address six of the schools back in the day when Jerry had put that out with the whole board, that would have addressed the six schools and the issues that we had, right? And it was going to cost us 180-some-one million dollars, and it was going to cost nine million, 8.4 million dollars a year. Guess what our budget is? At that time, it was 280-something dol-, how much was it, Dr. Bragan, if you don't mind me answering?
Roughly, I want to say 274.
274. 274 million dollars at that time. You add 8.4 million dollars to that budget, that's how much it would have cost us to take care of the problem three years ago, instead of that problem being used as a political ploy to go against the referendum that would have saved our kids from the overcrowding schools, right? That's one point. You saying you want to defeat a referendum if it comes back again, but think about it. Your house values are based on the school system that the school kids go to and the people that come and buy the houses here. So my point is this, you could defeat every referendum you want. At the end of the day, it's an investment into your future and your houses. That's one thing. And now your school budget is 3 mil-, 300 million dollars, above what was going to cost you to get your schools fixed. 274 or 76 million plus 8.4 million, your budget is 300 million now. So you don't even have the fixes that you wanted, but your budget is still up there. So just remember that next time a referendum comes and you decide whether you want to go for it or not, what is it going to affect and how is it going to affect? You said the kids, the parents, after they're done with our school system, they move out. Guess what? Our skills, our kids are going to a school that is 500-plus students overcrowded, and we could have fixed the problem three years ago if it wasn't used as a political ploy last, last time. And I don't feel like that should be used again, but that's, if you want to bring it, let's do it, that's fine. But that's my point that I want to make. So if you want to defeat a referendum, do it, but it's going to cost at the peril of the people that go to their schools.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patel. No, Mr. Patel, you're, you're finished. Ms., Ms. Anita has the floor.
I have 15 seconds.
You do not. At the end, you have 10 seconds. At the end.
You only give that 10 seconds?
At the end. No, Ms. Anita is up.
First timers.
Hi, Anita, Edison, New Jersey. I hope all your summer is going on well. First of all, I want to thank the entire board. We did a great job last year. We did facilities improvement. We did a lot of esports. We bought a lot of academic improvements. We had the support of the Budget Committee for the robotics and AI and technology skills. So, that's a good job. Now, progressing to the next year, what, what can we see in the next year? Edison is a diverse town, and we pride ourselves as a community of diversity, equity, and inclusion. As the transportation and the enrollment program rolls, there's going to be a lot of public coming to the window and asking doubts and clarifications. So I sincerely request the departments, the personnel for standing near the window to be patient. Patience is a virtue. And I just thought of a solution approach, maybe you have a very nice diversity officer. So, if, if, if there's a diversity team, and especially when there's a communication barrier, if you can have just a help desk so that when people come in, they can ask some questions. I found the same at DMV office. As soon as you enter, you have a help desk, and you go through certain questions, they help you out, and then when you go to the main window, you know what, 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 what you're going to ask. So, please, let the personnel know to be patient, and there's, there's going to be a lot of doubts and clarifications, so please. The second thing I came here is because I volunteered for the Green Environmental Team. We are looking at sustainable, they're looking at making the schools a sustainable Jersey certification. So, what I understand, and I think they reached out to Ms. Virginia White as well before, some of the schools got some certification, and they get a grant, they got a 10K grant, and they replaced all the water filters. So, the Green Team is looking at if the schools can register and get themselves the Sustainable Jersey certification. That is a very progressive idea. Lot of schools have gotten in in New Jersey. It would be wonderful if Edison becomes a green school, and you get a green star from the Department of Energy, I think, and it's a big star for our school. So that would be the second thing. The third thing is, there are a lot of clubs after school, clubs and programs. Some of them are redundant without any activity. Some of them have activity. Maybe we can progress this year and see what new clubs you can open, and what old clubs which don't have any activity, old programs. If you can, you know, do an assessment and try to see how to progress to the next year. So, we, all the residents are looking forward to the new year and what new progressive ideas you can bring to the table. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Anita. I did receive some communication regarding the sustainable building. That's JMI, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to be working on that. Other public comment. Ms. Orchid.
Hi, Maria Orchid, 83, Jefferson. I'm missing all the wipes and everything. Thank you for giving the food for the families in need every Thursday at J.P. Stevens and Edison High. It does make a difference to the community. Thank you. Thank you to all the volunteers that helped. Will Silver Lake, please check our website at Beautiful Edison for future volunteer opportunities. Without the volunteers, we can't clean up the parks and the roadside areas in desperate need of help. National Night Out is August 2nd. I hope to see everyone there. There'll be Lake Papiani from 6:00 PM to 10:30. I'm not sure what the movie is, but would love to see everyone there.
I think it's Paw Patrol.
Which one?
Paw Patrol.
Oh, that's a cute one. Middlesex County Fair is August 1st through the 7th. Come and visit with the 4-H Club. You get to learn a lot of different things there. Don't forget your summer reading. I think you should meet at a different school every month. This is a beautiful way of seeing the diversity about Edison. I don't mind traveling. I love James Monroe, and I don't think we have been here for quite some time. Thank you for working with the township regarding all the parking. It's, it's been traffic problems, and I know sometimes it's not easy solutions, but thank you. 988 is the new mental health phone line for anyone that needs to reach out. It's one of those national numbers. I asked also at the township about our crossing guard updates and our ABC after-school. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orchid. Ms. Conway?
Elizabeth Conway, 20, Netherwood Circle. My question is, we did get a number for the incoming kindergartners at 1,079. I'd like to know if there's been an increase in the numbers of the upper grades, because I know if I would be sending my kindergartner now to full-day kindergarten, am I also sending my second grader or a third grader because they were all at a private school to keep them in one building? Are they now moving into the public sector? Because my concern is, I'm glad that we're getting full-day kindergarten, and it's been out of our district for 10 years or more. And we didn't build any more classrooms to get full-day kindergarten back. What we did was, we cut back, from what I'm hearing, on upper classrooms. So we might have gotten rid of one section of fifth grade or one section of second grade in order to accommodate the additional kindergartners. But my concern is, what if those numbers are going up, or how are we going to really deal with an additional number in the upper grades? Especially, I'm, I'm really concerned about first and second grade, that the numbers stay down, that the kids get what they need in first and second grade without overloading the classrooms. And by the overloading, I'm not talking about going over and being overcrowded, but keeping it to a reasonable number in order for the children to get the best education possible. My second item is, back to the buses again. I know we got additional buses, and we have 100 routes out of 375. How many routes did we have before out of the 375? So, what I'm asking is, how many additional routes are we able to handle because we have more buses, is my question. Next item is my thing close to my heart because I was deeply involved with Lincoln Elementary School addition happening. Is there, could you give an update as to the status of the, the building? And are we going to be ready to at least utilize some of it? And the last thing was, the committee of the whole. You did talk about us, the next meeting being August 23rd. Will there be a committee of the whole meeting in the near future? I don't believe there was one in July. Will there be one in, in August? Because there is so much going on in our district, it would be nice to have that additional meeting to hear about. I know we go down to one combined meeting, and it's not the best to have considering you were gone for two, over two hours now. It makes it more overwhelming, to be honest with you. So if we had that extra meeting, I know nobody likes to go to an extra meeting, but in order to get out the information to at least the people on, that can watch it on YouTube or the website, to let them know of all the occurrences, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. I'll take the question about the committee of the whole. We will be having a meeting late summer. It's not going to be before the next board meeting. That's simply due to the fact that Dr. Bragan and his team have a lot of homework to do before that next meeting. There's a lot of moving parts. Part of that is the bond council and the financial advisor and the appointments that we did tonight to make sure that we have some of the money discussed, and, you know, this is just, you know, some mechanics and nuts and bolts behind the scenes that need to be worked out. Not before the next, it, it might be August, but not before the next board meeting. So it might be late August. I have to figure that out. It's on me to set that, and right now I don't have a plan to set it before the next meeting on the 23rd. But that does not mean work is not being done. It's, the board's job is to guide, you know, the administration and what they're accomplishing, and I know Dr. Bragan and his team are working hard. So, I too look forward to an update. We'll share with you when we can. If you have any specific questions, you could always reach out. Regarding Lincoln School, I'll defer to Dr. Bragan.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Conway. Always very insightful questions. The kindergarten numbers are what they are, and we are looking at the other numbers across all the other grades as well, especially first grade and second grade, as well as the upper elementaries. Right now, they're lower than what we anticipated, so we feel pretty confident that we're able to cover everything without having larger class sizes than we anticipated. But we're monitoring. We'll, we'll stay on top of that. So we haven't seen that spike in, you know, the upper elementary grades as, that you alluded to. Regarding the buses, I don't have an exact number, and one of the reasons is, last year, a lot of our internal drivers, we utilized to fill some of the routes that were dropped and changed. And the year before, we had a lot of stunted routes and stuff due to the COVID closures back and forth. I do know our overall routes were around 415 in the past, and we consolidated routes to get that down at 375, just to be more efficient in the routes that we have. So, we'll monitor that. And, as I said earlier, I anticipated going up more than 100 as we move forward and have more drivers and get more acclimated into doing our own routes. If I was going to guess, Mrs. Conway, I'd say it was between 60 and 70 last year that we did ourselves, but I could get that exact number. I don't know it off the top of my head. And the Lincoln addition is, is progressing nicely. There's a couple of bumps in the road, as people probably are aware, supply chain issues and parts and materials and everything else that you could think of have, have been an issue there. Again, bumps in the road, but it hasn't stopped us from progressing and moving forward. The board had a, a discussion tonight with the architect. One of the issues is about, I mentioned it at our committee of the whole meeting, a switchgear, which I used, used to have no knowledge of what that is, but it's instrumental in bringing the electrical power into the building. So there's some delay with that, so we may have to have our power provided in an alternate way, either that's via generator or some other options we pursued. But we're on, still on track to open all the classrooms for September 1st. All right, the gym, as we said, and the multipurpose room will be a little delayed because the prefabricated steel structure was a little behind schedule. So that will be opened after that. You know, we're hoping in a couple of months, but at the latest, that would be Christmas time. So, fingers crossed, and, you know, everything's moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Other public comment? Yes, Ms.?
Good evening to all the members of the board. Thank you for allowing the public to speak. My name is Rakaya Suliman of North Edison.
Could you just move the microphone closer to you? There you go.
Is that better?
Much better. Thank you.
So my name is Rakaya Suliman of North Edison, and I'd like to thank you for allowing the public to speak, as I stated. I too was a parent who was looking for pre-K, so I'm happy to hear that you guys are considering pre-K. You understand and you're aware that it's needed and very necessary. Congratulate you guys on the enrollment numbers of kindergarten. it's needed and very necessary. Congratulate you guys on the enrollment numbers of kindergarten. Unfortunately, when I moved here, I was part of the struggle with pre-K. My daughter is now going to sixth grade. I also am one of the people who moved here for the Edison School District. Unfortunately, I actually see lack of ethnicity diversity here, and from that, we have suffered, I want to say, abuse from the schools. I do realize that testing is one of the major concerns, and it's why I believe that the school system is, you know, known to be very good. My concerns, over the past couple of months, I've heard from a number of parents who reached out to me in frustration because of their child needing to attend another year at John Adams Middle School. But no one had yet acknowledged my acceptance of correspondence the last time I was here, until I reached out via email to you, Dr. Bregan, to address the substance of concerns, which were discrimination with invective and eradicated behavior from the principal and the vice principal. I am also happy to hear that you guys are, I guess, developing a mental health plan for the children. That's very necessary. I'm sorry. Could you please let me know so that I can let the community know why no one has responded to constituents? And for those who are still preserving in their efforts to communicate with you, what is the best way for them to do so? So far as the AC, where are the students who need the AC, or where are they supposed to be placed when they need the AC? I myself have a child who is in need of AC, and I believe that he was told to go into the nurse's office to cool down when there weren't available classrooms for him with AC. And with that, he would miss out on some of his academic learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Suliman, you spoke at a previous board meeting, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
I thought we had a meeting scheduled. Did we never get that scheduled?
We do not have a meeting scheduled. I emailed-
Me?
Yes.
And I didn't get back to you?
You got back to me and stated what you just stated, which is, I thought we had a meeting scheduled.
And then, we didn't schedule it?
No.
All right. Before you leave tonight, we'll schedule a meeting. If that's okay with you.
That is perfectly okay with me. Thank you.
I apologize for that.
Thank you. Other public comment? Mr. Manesh, you have 10 seconds. Would you like them?
I will take that 10 seconds. All I was trying to say is, if you use the same company, what are the chances that we're going to get a referendum passed? Because if you use the same people, remember the name. So, please think about it. That's all I said.
10 seconds. Thank you very much. Motion to end public comments?
Motion.
Mr. Patel, motion second. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mr. Patel, motion second?
Second.
Mr. Shi, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.